Mr. Palmer, would you care to raise your pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pride, would you care to give this to his pet?
Oh, God, in the midst of icy and cold days, we're grateful for your light that warms us with your hope. We trust that you are here tonight guiding our city officials as they discuss and deliberate and care for this community. Amen.
Mr. Cruz, have you overlooked the minutes of the previous meeting from dated February 18th, 2014? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion changes? If there's not any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That's passed. So, we're going to new business now. The item A is NCF settlement premium refund check to CLGW. What this is regarding is due to the lack of claims past year, the city has been given a, I'll call it a rebate check for the amount of $35,562. Now, you've got to understand that this is including the city utilities under one policy. The city utility is, would like to, since they have 185 members under coverage and the city has 53 members under coverage, they would like to separate the money based on that ratio, which to me makes sense to do such. That would make CLGW getting $27,619, 14 cents. The city would be getting $7,912 and 86 cents. That has been agreed upon by the CLGW and I ask that this be placed in front of the council so you all can give your approval. This coming from the city of Kennet to CLGW's council.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Certainly.
We have a second discussion. I would like, and if it's within, and I understand the budget crunch, but this is a little bit extra money, I would like put a portion, and not the entire amount, but a portion to some sort of employee gathering, maybe a summer party, use part of these proceeds thanking them for keeping our claims down. I don't need an answer tonight, but I would like for you all to think about this and see if we can put that to something where it's a thank you to the folks out there, employees. With that said, the current motion is to approve the separation of monies between CLGW and the city of Kennet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Would you care to place that on the agenda? Move it. Item B, new trash disposal companies here in Kennet.
Okay. We have an ordinance, we discussed this the last meeting in that waste management, solid waste ordinance which was passed some time ago, does have a provision that prohibited issuing licenses to any company, anybody new, and what's proposed at the last meeting is to eliminate that. First reading of this, the ordinance amending the Waste Management Chapter of Municipal Code of the City of Kennet by eliminating the provision thereof prohibiting the issuance of new licenses for solid waste collection.
There are motion to approve this.
Certainly.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading.
An ordinance amending the Waste Management Chapter of Municipal Code of the City of Kennet by eliminating the provision thereof prohibiting the issuance of new licenses for solid waste collection.
There are motion.
Motion.
And a second. We have a motion and a second discussion. This will be a roll call.
Is this, the vote that the public made on the, can I just pick up? Does it have anything under that?
No, no. Yeah, the vote that the public did on, the advisory vote that we had the public do a few years ago, pretty much probably round or soundly says that they don't want the city getting into solid waste business. And this ordinance, the original chapter been passed prior to that, and I think probably the justification for not having any new waste businesses come in is that the city might be taking over. Well, that's not going to happen, so there really is no justification to have the prohibition for any new waste management licenses, and this just takes that out.
Any other questions or discussion? This will be a roll call, vote. Mike Hahn?
Yes.
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 That's next. Adam C, is Mr. Chris Droop represents the Little River Festival?
There you go. Good. Well, we know what we're handling, and we were just, we handled this year, I mean, until this meeting, come back, and you've all had the notes of what we have going on at River Fest and the outlay, and you know, you had, last year you saw the dollars and cents that we spent in town, which exceeded the amount that, the grant that we rewarded, and we're doing the same thing this year. We're buying everything in Kennet that we can buy, and we keep it on the streets, and anything that's with, uh, bag, you know, we've been, anything we buy, we buy in town, the local businesses, not the big corporate deals. So, anything you all could be willing to do for River Fest, we would be greatly appreciative.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Droop?
Mr. McVeigh, have you expressed some concerns over us?
There is some concern because this is a private enterprise, and it may be considered construed as public money going to help private business.
Kind of handcuffs us as to what we can legally do, we feel like is, so I think we all wish you a lot of success with it, but I don't think that we're going to be able to do much with legal counsel on this at this point. But we all encourage you to continue and to be as successful as what you can be. I like your lineup, I like everything that you're doing, and we appreciate the expenditure and the way it's brought business to Kennet as well.
I appreciate you all, and I hope you do everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm Lee Atwell, I'm here on behalf of the Kennet JC. We're here again to follow up on our previous request for granting the tourism fund to help fund our annual barbecue cook-off that's scheduled for April 4th and 5th. And I have stuff giving you all some handouts showing the number of teams from last year, the teams and judges that are signed up for this year. We've had a few additions on the judges and teams since last time, but we appreciate any assistance that the city can provide us.
Any questions for Mr. Atwell? This is a not-for-profit.
Yes, Kennet JC's are nonprofit.
But this is, every year you come back.
This is only the second time we've been here, or third time, third time we've been here. We came, I believe, back in '09 maybe, or '10, and then last year, and then this year.
What I'm saying is, you keep coming back for more. Can you not save some of that money?
We save money and order kind of a rainy day fund in the event that, because this is our biggest fundraiser for the year, and we try to save money in the event that it could come in and start raining, and then we, the whole week, and we probably, it'd funk if we did not have some sort of insurance as savings. But typically, the money that we make from year to year, we try and turn around and reinvest that into the city through our charitable programs such as the food, or our primary project where we put baskets around Christmas, and then the shoe projects, for the Kennet School District, and we get through scholarships out, and various other charitable giving that we do throughout the year. But this is our primary fundraiser for basically all of our projects.
Under different circumstances, you know, I would certainly have no problem helping you guys. I think it's very different when we're talking about a social program that gives back so much to the community every, every year, like you guys have done for years. But, you know, we've been preaching Ashton's old people for quite a while, and asking everybody else to really cut that, so I just think we have to be very careful on the money that we spend.
We also, this isn't our only source of funding, put this on, we ask for public sponsorships and things like that. I will go ahead and, as of now, this year, our donations and sponsorships are down considerably from last year, whether it's the economy, whether, I don't know, but, but of course, you can't, you can't guarantee, and you can't plan on sponsorship money every year, you have to have, you know, a lot of capital as well.
What are you all asking for?
Our original request was $10,000.
$10,000?
Yes.
Well, I just don't know, probably not going to be $10,000, I mean, but I just don't, I don't know why we wouldn't support this.
Especially out of tourism marketing. There's strictly, well, I mean, it's not committed to our budget.
My understanding on tourism fund is a lot of that is financed by the hotel rooms, and our position is that this is an event that does bring people in to stay at the hotel rooms, actually fund this, this, these funds that we're seeking to ask for, and in addition, as I said before, all of the other people that come in town and spending money at, you know, KFC's and Walmart and whatnot, with the citywide sales tax, we're also, I mean, I don't stand up here and report that you're going to get dollar for dollar value back, but certainly you're seeing some revenue from that.
Would we have some kind of sign that said, "Support the best city of Kennet," or?
Yes, we could certainly provide you as a primary sponsor, and include you on our T-shirts that we print up, and any banners or print advertising that we have.
I'll make a motion, we provide $5,000 dollars, that's what we gave last year.
Second that.
There's a motion for $5,000, coming strictly out of tourism marketing fund.
And I wear a size large on my shirt.
Okay. We can take care of that.
This financial report here on tourism, is that an uncommitted balance?
No, I think, yes, what will be uncommitted, right, this is what is committed for the rest of this quarter.
Yeah, it comes out of this figure. It's two total.
Right, after you subtract the $6,000 from this amount, that's what you will have left.
It's a month and a half of revenue, you know, it's roughly $3,000 a month coming into that account.
We do have a little bit out there. The JC's do do a lot for the community, and I think.
No questions back there.
Yes. There is a motion and a second, $5,000 coming from the tourism fund to fund the JC cook-off. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It's amazing.
Motion passes, nine to one votes. Thank you all. And where do we place our T-shirt sizes?
I'm not sure I'm going to picture that.
All right, guys, thank you. And Mr. Droop, thank you for being here this evening.
Good to talk to both of you. Hope the organization did very well.
All right, folks, we're going to go into item A, this discussion, the ordinance allowing code enforcement permission to temporary mobile office, mobile home office.
I have gotten the code enforcement, it's exactly what we need to do to work that, so we can do that from that point.
All right, we have a job opening over at the street department.
Can we back up just a minute?
Yes.
I'm asking you, what is this word, somebody that wants to set up a temporary home?
That would be directed to.
No, sir. It's what we had recently when Plaza Tower, we're using as an example, they had their fire, and they, they wanted to get back into business as soon as possible, which is a wise move because of the customer base and competition and such. So, in order to do that, the building they got did not allow for any office space or customers to sit in there while they're car, so they rented a mobile or modular building to establish it there for the purpose of customers sitting in there and do their office work. Technically, they have to go get all this through the board of adjustments and get, and it can take some time and bog somebody down in getting back into business.
Well, we've done this before, Unicold Bank.
But they had to go through the process.
Right.
So what I'm doing to make it more legal and upfront is that if it's a burnout, or if it's a star that destroys a building, some emergency basis only, that would allow the code enforcement officer to issue the permit, get all the stuff rolling for the person, so they don't have to go through the three or four step process and delay them in getting something set up that meets our code and be legal. After six months, then they should be working on if they need something longer, they've got time to know whether they need longer than six months, to go to the board of adjustments and then brought to the council and get that final approval.
And strictly business only?
This is just for business as a window of opportunity to show that we're trying to work with businesses out here to reestablish theirself in a time of a disaster, whether it's just a single disaster or multiple.
All right, we'll move on to the job opening. Carter, Mr. Palmer, you all have a poll?
We had an employee leave us recently, and we'd just like to fill that position if we possibly can, since we're getting in, we're starting our busy season, like yesterday, with the weather hopefully going to be breaking and turning spring before long, we're actually, we're already, this makes us two employees short really, so, you know, by losing this person, it really puts us in a bind.
Are you advertised, or you have someone in mind?
We haven't advertised, though. I was asking permission to advertise.
I feel certainly that we need to do that.
We are, it's going to take a little bit of time to go through this process, so I thought we should get started on it now.
Your budget, how's your budget looking?
I'm surprised it warmed up a little bit first for you.
I think we're all right. I mean, we're going to lose a month's salary here, just in the time we get that back around, you know, we're just out of salaries, so.
All right, anything else on the job opening?
I'll give Chris one.
What are the basic qualifications for that position?
They're pretty minimal. I prefer somebody that already has heavy equipment training, have some kind of construction skills, do more concrete work, you know, somebody who's got some carpentry skills can also pick up concrete fairly fast, have to be able to physically do quite a bit of work, very physically demanding job, so, but some heavy equipment, farming even, background, driving stuff, it's a whole lot easier to teach them that if they've got some background in there.
All right, let's move into unfinished business. I don't know, Public Safety Department ordinance.
You all have in front of you what I emailed you earlier, is a proposed ordinance that doesn't set up the Public Safety Department, but it does establish a director of public safety, the position of director of public safety, and deputy chief of police department, deputy chief of fire department, and establishes a public safety committee of the city council, and attached to that are proposed job descriptions.
What I'd like to do is before we make any kind of motions, I'd like to open the floor to discussion with the council as to any questions of job descriptions, as to what Mr. McVeigh's covered just then. Just continue our discussion if there is any discussion to continue. So the floor is open if anyone wishes to, does may put in subject.
I've tried to analyze, and I think most of us have tried to analyze the pros and cons of this ordinance, and I kind of like to hear on an individual basis what people are thinking at this point, because I'd like for the community to know what we're thinking about this department as well. I've talked to some of the police, and their greatest concerns I felt like were advancement within the department and their schedule issues, and I have not heard much from the fire department side except encouragement. I see this by breaking it down the way Mr. McVeigh has it set up, that it is purely a fire department and a police department, but it gives us the opportunity in the future to cross train and do the things that we need and get this program started. I view this as a baby step right now. It, it takes the, some of the concerns out of the issue by maintaining individual departments. I think what, it also gives us the opportunity to take the animal control department as an independent department as well. I've just, I've heard from the community out, that I have heard from, thinks it's a reasonable progression to manage our fiscal issues as well. I'd like to hear if, what everybody else is thinking.
I think it's pretty, pretty difficult to specifically lift each task that you would expect to come from any one of these people, and so I, I think under the job description, we should add an item, a line item there that says, "Add other items as may be added over time." The point being, that, I'm bending situation where they had a definitive line of jobs, that this is your job, and if it's not there, it's not a job, all right? So I think we should have a provision under each job description that allows an addition of additional responsibility, in the event we overlook something, or in the event, you know, laws change, rules change, whatever, and so from time to time, we're going to have to upgrade it if we do it. Would that be feasible, Mr. McVeigh?
Sure, I mean, uh, these aren't, none of this is set in stone, and that's the reason I wanted to get it, actually wanted to get it to you before I did, we had server problems at our office, but none of these are set in stone, that's why I wanted to get them to you in order that any changes that needed to be made could be made, or any suggestions that you all had, we could incorporate those suggestions into any job description or anything else.
Mr. Blue, with that statement here, specific assignments and instructions regarding policies, programs, just, does that cover what you're talking about maybe? Looking at the deputy chief of fire, yeah.
That's a pretty standard clause in most job descriptions.
I'm talking about all three of them, needing to put a miscellaneous clause.
I would just, well, as long as we're going, we're understanding that there's additional responsibility, you know, if, if we took this like, well, required knowledge and steel ability, one, comprehensive knowledge of modern firefighting equipment and metal, you could have 411 subparagraph just for that one item. Have you specifically named, all the novels and all, you know, so that's what I'm saying, just so we understand that, you know, we're going to be pretty broad-minded about this if we doubt it, and that someone doesn't fall back and say, "No, that, that really wasn't on my list."
Let me interrupt the discussion just real quick. I should have done this prior to the meeting, just asked our council about this, but we need to have a meeting to discuss real estate, strictly real estate, based off the previous meeting we've had, had to close the meeting tonight. I wanted to inform everybody this, so if anybody left, they, none of them left by time, so, closed meeting after meeting.
We won't open back up again?
No, no, it's closed. It's closed, strictly for real estate only. Okay, sorry about that, but I needed to say that before we get too far off.
Roger, do you have any particular wording you want to add to this on the job descriptions?
No, I do, I mean, it's, you know, something in fact that, you know, and other miscellaneous, other items that may from time to time need to be added to the work list, assignment list.
Okay, we can show that as an amendment to all of the job descriptions.
Yeah. I think you'll find that pretty standard clause, and it.
Oh, yeah.
Going off of memory, it's something like other job duties and assignments.
As my rise and decline.
So is broad brush fully encompassing, covers what you're talking about?
Yes.
And notice, well, that wasn't my job description.
Yeah.
On number five, under public safety director, it said as prescribed by city and departmental policy, talking about the physical and psychological testing, is that going to be handled in town? Have to go somewhere else, or it's just there?
I don't know, that's, uh, wouldn't have to be handled in town, it could be handled somewhere, it doesn't say, it's not, and it's not going to say, it says how it's handled. I mean, that's pretty much up the council, up the committee. I'd say mostly up the committee as to how it's handled.
Well, from time to time, that, you know, the psychological testing might not be available here.
Right.
As the psychiatrists move in and out.
Well, but I mean, we don't, we don't need to put in the job description how it's going to be administered.
Okay.
I do have a question. John, you're still in the guard, though. Hey, how's this going to fall if he has to be gone for a certain period of time? Who's going to be public safety director if he had to be gone for a month?
It's in there.
I think the, I think the committee will, that will be up to the committee.
But it's also in there, that the deputy may.
Well, but it says, but it's that, it says that as to each deputy.
That's what you got your department head for anyway, I mean, the day-to-day.
Just fall back to the deputy.
The day-to-day routine, I mean, your deputy chief is going to run the departments anyway.
That's fine, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because we do run it, like we do.
We've been, we've been very fortunate with the personnel, we have taken care of the departments, you know, and John goes on guard, you know, David's handled it very well.
Kenny, I'm, I'm on the line down, I've got about, maybe 20 minutes, I think.
Other questions still yet?
Well, I'll say this, Bill, I wanted everybody's input, and I'll tell you mine, I feel that it's a stepping stone for Kennet. I think in the future, this is going to take years to progress, and I always see it as a plus for the city as far as our employees. I see a stronger police department, I see a stronger fire department, I see a pay increase for employees in the future, especially all employees that can cross train or willing to do it. I see a possibility for a lower insurance cost for the city by having all these employees do this. It's not going to happen overnight, and the public needs to understand that, it's not going to happen overnight, but I really feel deep down that this is going to really bring the departments together and make it stronger, and I just, I feel positive about it.
I pretty will go along with what you say, I think it's a positive step for the city.
I just see it as a cost savings, you know, and I understand there's some feelings there. You all need to understand, when, when John Law first came here, my dad was a fire chief, and the council, you know, pretty much had their decision made, they were going to hire a full-time chief, and they offered it to my father, and it's time he, you know, my father had a business to run, he couldn't just walk away from his own business, but the job was offered to him, and we're going to do the same thing with these other department heads, we're going to offer, you know, if, if you want the job, you know, later on down the road, when John stepped down. this job's still going to be available if you want that job. So I understand, I've been in the same position a lot of these police officers and these firemen are looking at later down the road. And, you know, I understand their concern, but as time went on, I learned it was a plus for Kennet the way that it was handled, so.